Good evening. I'd like to call to order the September 24th regular board meeting of the Mathacton School District Board of Directors. Please rise for the pledge. By way of announcements, the public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. An executive session of the board was held immediately prior to this meeting, this evening, in a classroom at the high school for the purpose of discussing a matter involving the employment of an administrative employee of the district. By way of attendance, we have all board members here this evening. And for recognition of guests and scheduled speakers, I turn to Dr. Zerbi.
Good evening, and thank you, Ms. President. Tonight, we have a number of presentations, but most importantly, we have a presentation to our students for outstanding academic excellence. And this evening, we are issuing M- awards to quite a number of students, nearly 300, for academic excellence as students that have a GPA of 93 percent or higher in all subject areas for the given school year. And these are M- awards for their performance in last school year's academic calendar. This evening, I am pleased to introduce High School Assistant Principal, Mr. Dan Bontempo. He's with us this evening, and he will help the board and I present the students with M- awards for outstanding academic achievement. Mr. Bontempo?
Thanks, Dr. Zerbi. On behalf of Dr. Sorgini and all the faculty of Mathacton High School, I'm proud to recognize your outstanding academic achievement for the 2018-19 school year. Please come forward as I call your name. From last year's freshman class: Quinn Adams; Ethan Andorn; Irene Bijou; Aaron Blackstone; Darren Brady; Margaret Burkheimer; Nicholas Candello; Amika Chiuangbut; Bonnie Chapman; Jonah Chapman; Nathan Choi; Brayden Churches; Mackenzie Clark; Caitlin Clark; Aiden Costello; Nathan Courtney; Benjamin Cunningham; Nicholas Sinssila; Olivia Davidson; Lilian Dierdorf; Giancarlo Di Filippis; Amber Di Michele; Gabrielle De Montaigne; Jacob Demott; Brian Dickie; Delaney Dahl; Catherine Drummond; Aditi Doukou; Jonathan Falvo; Owen Fazini; Claire Ferrance; Nathaniel Flores; Jalen Ford; Hannah Foltz; Bridget Gabel; Thomas Gibbs; Ashley Nanasikaran; Iris Gong; Nicole Gorchitza; Rachel Gordon; Allison Gottman; Haley Grau; Giovanna Gulino; Suncriti Gupta; Matt Haas; Graham Halfpenny; Kira Halfpenny.
Just give us a second.
Okay.
So ladies and gentlemen, we are going to be taking a class photo out in the hallway. And so, once we finish the ninth grade announcements for recognition, any parent who wants to also take photos out in the hallway of the class is welcome to join your child out there. So just give us a few minutes as we reconcile some of the circumstances. Thank you.
Kira Halfpenny; Jordan Henry; Julia Horowitz; Catherine Hall; Ayush Ayr; Josephine James; Jasmine Jiang; Melinda Jin; Joseph Kaminetz; Yerin Kang; Michaela Kasparkova; Madeline Kenny; Sarah Kenwood; Joseph Kiernan; John Kim; Sarah Kim; Tyler Kim; Adeline Klechner; Reese Koch; Ryan Kramer; Dylan Kwong; Karina Kumar; Makina Comfort; Nicholas Lagana; James Laird; Sophia Lieber; Junie Lee; Sarah Legnola; Eric Lewinson; Owen Lee; Angela Leon; Michael Lu; Celia Long; Alexandra Laurenti; Aiden Lu; James Morrow; Allison Massantonio; Ryan Matour; Nolan McCloskey; Sidney McNally; Elizabeth McNichol; Colin Meyer; Zachary Miller; Elizabeth Minjin; Grace Montoya; Ruby Murray; Rhea Nike; Parry Nov; Madison Noe; Kirsten O'Brien; William Orcut; Teresa Otto; Prina Padmanabon; Natalia Parrientis; Devin Petrie; Alexander Petru; Dylan Fan; Devash Khosa; Sudish Reddy; Nathaniel Rice; Stephen Remisch; Daniel Rashan; Maria Rosinski; Madison Roth; Andrew Samtman; James Seaman; Anubhav Sen; Madeline Schaefer; Alice Shea; Michaela Shidi; Haig Shirosian; Reagan Skudlarik; Delaney Smith; Melanie Smith; Elena Snodgrass; Gavin Swaden; Holly Spleitzer; Cassandra Starcher; Sophia Starnieri; Rachel Steele; Cameron Steer; Quinton Stemler; Noah Stevenson; Sunandita Surish; Matthew Tang; Hannah Taylor; Harrison Taylor; Abigail Thornton; Nicole Timko; Samarin Upal; Robin Wong; Everett Weaver; Matthew Weber; Justin Weisher; Michael Willen; Wade Williams; Michael Wimmer; Charles Yang; Colin Ye; Madeline Yorgi; Stephanie Yu; Amy Zhang; and Jason Zhao. From last year's sophomore class: Daniel Abraham; Sean Augustine; Ethan Ahn; Hannah Alex; Christopher Ely; Isha Amin; Richard Armstrong; Charles Bordinaro; Brandon Bata; Paige Brady; Aiden Byrne; Katie Chan; Alec Chang; Claire Chen; Daniel Chimes; Sung Cho; Russell Coffin; Catherine Connolly; Jeffrey Cooper; Mario Diadesi; Janelle Davis; Paige Deal; Sarah Dedea; Joshua Doe; Daniel Durin; Charles Doratio; Madison Ismer; Lucas Elisi; Hannah Evans; Brooke Fenezi; Eva Faralia; Alexandria Ferrance; Jackson Fisher; Ava Fitzgerald; Lilian Friedman; Matthew Foo; Hannah Gerhart; Jeffrey Gong; Jacob Gorchitza; Catherine Green; Emerson Greiga; Joseph Gulian; Justin Gumiani; Emily Hall; Isabella Hyzer; Rachel Held; Kenny Hermus; Joshua Hein; Catherine Hile; Rachel Hogan; Lindsay Horowitz; Gabrielle Jacoby; Catherine Jawarski; Grace Kang; Maya Kanvar; Lily Kiefer; Nina Kimball; Adam Novy; Sophia Colamago; Alexa Kratz; Tyler Crop; Sahil Kawadia; Maya Lieber; Angela Lee; Edwin Lee; Patrick Lee; Jessica Lanin; Jake Lloyd; Juliet Lor; Mia Lucchese; Ella McCloskey; Haley McGarrity; Dominic Mioli; Abinab Morkos; Kathleen Mosima; Rachel Murray; Genevieve Nider; Olivia Knights; Carolyn Newman; Ty Nguyen; Kevin O'Connor; Meredith O'Donnell; Thomas Pacaro; Sudiksha Sudika Benda; Leah Peon; Hannah Peters; Tammy Pham; Sadia Rao; Lindsay Reed; Emma Retzloff; Lucas Ripley; Grace Romano; Christopher Roland; Jakila Ruiz; Kara Ridziewski; Jonathan Rue; Anthony Sala; Jenna Solkowski; Aaron Sanchez; Justin Sinelli; Christina Sang; John Schmidt; Sharon Shi; Emma Smith; Emma Spinelli; Christopher Spleitzer; Ryan Stanton; Rory Stein; Zachary Stevenson; Camya Taneha; Olivia Terry; Riley Thomas; Kelsey Tobin; Kevin Trafford; Kylie Tranquil; Bridget Troutman; Julia Tersey; Olivia Van Horn; Dan Vo; Serice Walker; Amanda Wang; Michael Wong; and Sarah Young. And last year's juniors: Nicholas Alum; Rachel Alderfer; Tyler Andorn; Michael Ashleman; Kristen Brickie; Samuel Burkheimer; Amanda Burkholder; Macy Chambers; Nicholas Chan; Naya Cherry; Elizabeth Chipman; Julianne Choi; Camille Cannard; Shrindi Dandibatla; Angelo Depepe; Nicole Dorn; Caitlin Duda; Celia Dugger; David Ellis; Caitlin Evans; Brendan Faraji; Siani Ford Barkley; Catherine Gabel; Daniel Geib; Ashley Goon; Sangeeta Gopi; Henry Grau; Ethan Gretzula; Nicole Harrison; Sarah Hansiker; Anna Jacobs; Avishak Jayatap; Eliana Joseph; Andrew Casala; Sagan Kekar; Anna Kaminetz; Jessica Carr; Juliana Keenan; Abigail Keg; Hannah Kim; Elizabeth Kirsch; Julia Kramer; Alexander Lacony; Alyssa Lanter; Zoe La Paglia; Matt Lausch; Alexandra Lawrie; Ethan Lewinson; Karen Lee; Kirsten Littrell; Amy Lonsdale; Alexa Marburger; Olivia Massar; Madison Mathis; Matthew Matour; Catherine McGrath; Corinne Meyer; Rachel Miller; Ryan Morgan; Luke Murray; V. Nguyen; V. Nguyen; Caleb Nice; Cooper Nice; Reese O'Brien; Catherine O'Connor; Rachel O'Toole; Luke Owensworth; Stella Peck; Jeffrey Pan; Pablo Parrientes; Midi Patel; Shreya Patil; Carolyn Pelacano; Krishna Pillutla; Mackenzie Pollack; Rachel Brusaki; Thomas Rieger; Paul John Rosetti; Leonardo Rusi; David Sang; Jasmine Seth; Isha Shah; Shazeb Sadiki; Azmita Sivakumar; Jiwook Song; Zachary Sorgini; Kalshik Srinath; Tara Shingari; Anna Steele; Riley Steer; Parker Stevenson; Laura Thorne; Arushi Tewari; Michael Torcini; Matt Tsai; Claire Sie; Ashley Upani; Natasha Vahura; Mega Vargis; Andrew Wang; Joshua Watt; Cecilia Weaver; Elias Weissman; Sarah Wolston; Helga Zinnelli; Annie Zhang; Vincent Sang; Joanna Shung; and Sophia Zhu.
Parents, you're certainly welcome to come down. You want to come into the middle, please make yourself at home. Congratulations. Thank you, Ms. Drummond, Ms. Hall, and Ms. Aubrey Larsonise, for your assistance. As you can see, it's rather challenging being up there trying to go through all the certificates as they're coming down, but you did a wonderful job, and I appreciate your assistance. And again, I think it's important to recognize our parents as they supported these students for a number of years through their academic endeavors, so we appreciate their efforts as well. So this evening, we move on to the second presentation, and that is a brief announcement by our board president on the Audubon Elementary School. Ms. Aubrey Larsonise?
And before we move on, I just need to give a humongous apology to whoever of our staff is going to be responsible for getting those certificates back in order. They are not in anything close to alphabetical order, so apologies. So this evening, we just wanted to give a little bit of an update of an ongoing property conversation that has been before the board. Lower Providence Township Supervisors Patrick Duffy and Peter McFarland approached the Mathacton School District Board of Directors in June of 2019, as some of you may have been here for, and requested that the school board consider discussing how the Audubon School property can be used for the public benefit. Since that time, Mathacton School Board Property Committee Chair Ralph Neberett has joined me in meeting on four occasions to draft a framework for future consideration by both the Township Board of Supervisors and the Mathacton Board of School Directors. The discussions are positive and will continue with the intent of sharing back with our respective boards for consideration in the future.
Next on the agenda is a-
Dave, if you can, since this is listed as a presentation item, if we can make some comments maybe around this, that would be appreciated. Is that appropriate time for board comment on this? I just want to bring up the idea that, you know, I think that this is great that you guys met with the township to see what the plan is here, what they have in mind, what kind of our terms were, how that's all working out. But I think that this is a perfect time to open this process up to anyone in the community who may be interested of a similar nature. I know as a board, we received an email from someone from the Mathacton Community Theater expressing interest, and I think it would be a great idea to establish a process moving forward that we open this up to anyone who might have an interest in this property, especially if it has an educational benefit to it. So I was wondering if maybe we could kind of start talking through some of that, that we can establish a process, a timeframe moving forward, that we can offer this, you know, this idea, this educational... I mean, this is a huge asset that we sit on. And although the township has expressed interest, I think it would be beneficial for the school district to explore all options here. So I just wanted to see if there was some board feedback along those lines.
I'll jump in. I agree. I think that it's great that we have progress with Lower Providence with the possibility of coming up with some type of mutually agreed solution on what to do with that property, but I think we do need to have it wide open for what our possibilities are. I don't know what that might be, but I would like to see some limited time period to see if there's anybody else interested in the property.
I would support that idea as well.
I would agree. And I think also, I think that might help in some... One of the concerns I raised initially was this district represents two town shows, both Lower Providence and Warchester, so we need to keep that in mind. And something I mentioned during the whole Arrowhead discussions were that I think there needs to be a comprehensive facilities analysis done that would encompass not only Audubon, but looking at Skyview or Cola, other elementaries. I mean, we recently introduced the possibility of expanding Warchester due to deal with enrollment needs. So I'd like to reiterate, I think, the need for an overall facility review, including, you know, Farina, the Bus Depot, the maintenance building at our Cola, and kind of every structure within the district needs to be looked at.
Just to address a small part of what you're bringing up, Mr. Enshaw, I will say that the need to meet the needs of all of our constituents in both townships has definitely been a part of our conversation. So Mr. Neberett and I are both aware of the fact that this property in belonging to the district belongs to both Warchester and Lower Providence, so we're definitely keeping that in mind.
The only thing I'll just add to what people said is I just, I don't know the feasibility of opening it up. I'm not saying we shouldn't, but I just don't know the feasibility of that, meaning, how do you advertise that? Does someone other than a township have the means for that? So that's one thing I would address. And the only other thing is I missed the June meeting, and I did watch it on video, but you missed some things on video. Was there a reason why they didn't come to us till June? It seemed like we were waiting and waiting to hear from the township. And I was just curious, did that come up at all, why we didn't hear from them till June? I was just curious, because we were waiting. We were kind of waiting a little bit, if I remember. Okay.
Along those lines, I think that's a great point there, Andrea. And I think that, like I said, this is a great asset that we have as a school district, and we have a new communications director who's fantastic so far. So I think that this would be a great opportunity to, let's put out press releases, let's put stuff in the papers, let's contact the news agencies. I mean, we can go at this from a positive standpoint. You know, we closed the building, you know, some people weren't very happy with that, but that's the choice that we made. But we can turn what some may see as negative into a positive by putting this out there and saying, if there's a school district in Montgomery County who has land, who's entertaining ideas that are for the public benefit, and that they have educational aspects to them, you may get a surprising response to this. I mean, maybe you only get one other person, maybe you get no one, maybe you get multiple. But I think putting it out there as an asset, an investment in a community, and like Paul mentioned, even if you keep it in a short timeframe, if we want to make it a 90-day thing or something like that as a turnaround, we may be surprised with what we get. Maybe we just wind up with the same offer on the table, and that offer is there. I mean, I don't know what the exact terms are, but we're not saying no. We're just saying, hey, can we have a process here to evaluate what we get back?
And I will say that in our preliminary conversations, the need for this to benefit our communities, the need to serve our educational mission for this district is all part of the conversation, and it is definitely an objective in this conversation.
Yeah, I'll say without saying too much about the negotiation process or some of the other avenues that were investigated, as a school district, we're limited in what we can do with the property, right? The school code dictates certain things about it. So certainly, selling the property is one option that we discussed, right? This was one of the first things that we brought up when I took over the Property Committee back in January of last year. What can we sell? So we've talked about different things, we've had appraisals done. I would say, aside from the one other offer that you brought up relative to the Mathacton Community Theater, I don't think there's been a viable proposal that's come across any of our desks. And the continued feedback or commentary that I hear from people in the community is, what are we doing with Audubon? And I think here, we have a ready-made solution that works for the people in both townships to do something with the property that keeps it in Mathacton School District for use at a later time, but still uses it to serve our community. I think that's a really, really positive thing for us as a board, for Lower Providence as a board, and for the people of Warchester. One of the reasons I wanted to be on this, part of this discussion, was not just because I'm the chair of the Property Committee, but because I live in Warchester. And one of the important things is making sure that, you know, Jen and I are the only ones up here that represent Warchester, and making sure that, you know, our township had a voice in this too. So, you know, there's no reason to necessarily rush it, but the property has been vacant for, what, two years? Certainly, we use it, and there's people in there. I don't want to imply that it's vacant vacant, but in the two years that it's sat here, it is the best offer we've seen so far. So I think it's worth investigating further. So I think it's worth investigating further. I'll tell you that I think that the framework that we've discussed so far has quite a bit in it for us as a district and for the community.
Thank you, Ralph. I appreciate that, and I think that that's another aspect, which I'm not sure when that falls into this process, of the idea of what you're talking about, the terms and things of that, like, I don't know when that proposal is coming, or is that a joint presentation that will be to the board and all that? So I guess maybe that's probably coming in the future. But I do want to address the one thing that you said, that, you know, it's been vacant for two years or whatever. But I think it's important to realize that we have these meetings where maybe if we're lucky, 20 people from the public attend. I don't know how many watched the video. So although we have an empty building, we've never made our intentions of, are we going to sell this? Are we not going to sell this? Are we entertaining ideas for this? So unless you're getting that idea out there, it's kind of like, how would you know to put an offer out or to see what's happening? So I think that there's a disconnect there, where yes, this building's been emptied, but we've kind of put it on the back burner because so much else is going on, that I think we should announce that we're entertaining. I don't think there's any harm in it. And again, I don't know if there's pressure or a timeline that the township is on that maybe we're not on, but, you know, a short timeframe of 90 days or maybe a little bit longer, whatever, I mean, I don't think it's asking too much for a very valuable property to us. And like I said, I don't know what the terms are in terms of what we as a school district get out of this. I can see from the township standpoint, pretty much no matter what the terms are, it's got to be fantastic for them. How could you say no to a township building, to a community center? I mean, that's great, but I mentioned this last week in regards to another topic, that although it's the same residents, the township supervisors are in charge of the township, municipality aspect of that. We as a school district have our own assets and have a different, you know, way of looking at things than maybe they might. So I think it's important to realize what our goals are and what's best for Methacton School District and all of our taxpayers who pay taxes that come to us, as opposed to just being, it's good for the township itself. And maybe, I don't know what aspect of this has Warsester in it, but again, I don't think that there's any harm in opening this up to a true process, as opposed to just saying the first person who comes to us, you know, that's the route we're going to get on.
Wasn't that covered during the presentation that the supervisors gave, that the summer camps would be open to the Warsester residents also then? Wasn't that part of the presentation?
Yeah, that was one of the things that they suggested. And, I'm sorry, but Camp Perkiomi as a benefit to an entire township would, I think, barely touch how many residents. And I don't know if that Camp Perkiomi being open to Warsester, if that means that they're coming into Audubon, or if we would actually have Camp Perkiomi in Warsester. But again, I'd just say, what is that, 60 kids, maybe? So if you're addressing an entire township for one small portion... And again, I think that this gets to my first point, which I said to Mr. Neberett, is we don't know as a board what the details are yet. So again, I'm kind of just trying to, while they're ironing out the rest of the details and whenever they come back to us, what is the harm in having another avenue here? That's my point here, is I don't think... You can certainly say, yes, the board of nine board members can vote yes to do this for the township, but I'm just curious why we can't open this up to see what else is available.
I'm just, I would like to just, I think when you look at the land, it's located in Lower Providence, so no matter... We can open it up for 90 days, and we can do the marking like you're saying, but no matter what, if it's a theater company coming in, it's a program that, in my mind, is going to be established there. So whatever program you want to say, whether it's theater, community center, and so forth, it's going to have to be open to both communities. However, it's located in Lower Providence. So no matter what we're going to offer into that building, we're going to, somehow we're going to twist it. The only way that we could say it will benefit us is if we sell it, and in my opinion, I don't want to sell it because I think it will open up to charter schools and looking at the value of the land. So I think, I agree, we can open it up, but I think we should definitely get that presentation and move forward and see that, at the same time, opening up to look at other options. But a program running, no matter what it is, will always be located at Lower Providence. So it's just the basics, but whatever it is, should be open to both. Just like ARA is located in Lower Providence, just like WRA is located at Warsester, it's just location, and hopefully, we could create a communication between Warsester supervisors and Lower Providence supervisors and create programming together would be the only option, as if it benefits both. Otherwise, a sale would be probably the only way you could do 50/50 if you're looking at it, in my opinion.
Well, I think, I appreciate hearing all this input from the board, and I think that this will definitely help to shape some of the conversations that we have going forward. Mr. Neberett and I will continue to work on this, so if anyone has any other input, please feel free to reach out. And that goes for the public as well, obviously. Moving on in our presentations, Dr. Zerbi.
Next on the agenda, we have the per capita tax discussion. Mr. Bricker has placed a handout at your table. Mr. Gina, would you, if you'd be so kind to put the screen down, I'd appreciate that. As Mr. Bricker is approaching the podium to give basically a summary of a discussion that's been occurring probably for, well, for some of us, it would be for a long period of time, maybe even more than a year or so. However, and there's some comedy here, because I believe, if I'm correct, Mr. Enshaw, you brought this up before you becoming a member of the board. Is that accurate?
That is accurate.
Okay. So, you know, call a spade a spade. So it is exactly what it is, and so this has been brought up in Finance Committee a number of times. The administration has been, you know, challenged to gather some information. Mr. Bricker is going to present that information in summary, and then I'd like to turn the discussion over to Mr. Enshaw, the chairman of the Finance Committee, to lead whatever discussion he chooses to do so. So, Mr. Bricker?
Good evening. As Dr. Zerbi noted, this is a subject that's been discussed at the Finance Committee. It's also been included in some of the weekly updates that have been provided to Dr. Zerbi and the school board. On the per capita cap, it's real simple. It's a flax tax on anyone over the 18, regardless of whether they own property or whether they are even employed. It's $10 under Act 511, and it's $5 under Act 679, for a total of $15. In 1819, our collections were about $300,000, 294 to be exact. The cost to collect this, it was $30,000. 7% of this goes for billing, $20,000. Another $10,000 goes for the purse postage, which is 3%. The net revenue to the school district was $264,462.36. There's a township cost-sharing option. The current costs are 10% of the total revenue, as shown on the other page. If we split this with the two municipalities that we have in our school district, Warsester Township collects $1 of the $10, and Lower Providence collects $5 of the $15, so the cost would ultimately reduce to 7.7% if the townships helped in the payment of the cost to collect the bill and mail invoices. Warsester paying 1/16th of the cost, and Lower Providence paying 1/3rd of the cost, and that's based on the amount of money that they are collecting versus the total amount. The school district sharing option would then increase the net revenue to $7,775 for 2018-19.
I just want to make one point of clarification, so that there's no misunderstanding. This is, this represents only if the townships would choose to share the cost associated with it. They do not do that at this point in time, so I don't want to make any assumption that we approach the township or either township about that matter, but we had the conversations with Burkheimer specifically, how this would operate, if it was, if we were to approach them, and they were to consider it.
That is correct. Then there are some questions that were posed by the Finance Committee and board members. How does Burkheimer handle the management of the addresses? The files are reviewed annually. This allows Burkheimer to remove individuals that have moved out of the district, knows they've moved into the district. How do they handle Shenondale? When I first came in, I remember Shenondale being a source of contention. I actually went person by person to make sure we had the right one versus Shenondale's list. Now Shenondale and the Lower Providence Township can do that, and they then forward their results to Burkheimer, then updates their records. How do they find the individuals to bill? The district's earned income tax rolls are checked throughout the year, new residents that have moved into the district. These additions are based on the township they reside in and sent a bill for the current period. What's the process for waiving tax on students? Simply put, if the student calls up and says, "I'm enrolled in school, higher education," they will waive it. You'll see down below, Warsester had 75 students this year, and Lower Providence had 251 students that were zoneted. They then go back on, and then next year, they'd have to do it. Burkheimer has stated that if they would like us to obtain proof of enrollment in that program, that's something they'd be willing to do, but at this point in time, no one's directed them to do so. To reduce mailings, can Burkheimer send the invoices in one envelope? At the end of the day, it's a violation of Act 50, which is taxpayers' bill rights, and they could lose their license as a tax collector as well as go to jail, so that is not a possibility to help cut the cost. In conclusion, some of the board's concerns, the costs are 10% of the actual collections. I could save the taxpayers $30,000 in costs if we add to the real estate tax. Townships can backfill the $5 for Lower Providence. It would be the difference between Warsester to whatever they can charge up to the $10. If we forego that, the amount of tax that would be made up potentially through the real estate taxes would shift the taxes from the population to those that own real estate that is taxable.
Mr. Enshaw?
Thank you, Mr. Bricker, for pulling this information together. I guess the first thing I'd like to do is, does anybody have any questions on the information that Tim presented, before I get into my comments and my recommendations?
I have a question. My question is that it sounds like they use the earned income tax rolls to identify people, though the tax is imposed on people regardless of earned income.
That's just one of the ways that they get the information, they get people moving in and out and reports on that. I could get very specific with that, I was just giving the general information.
Okay, so there are multiple ways. It's only not, it's not only relying on earned income tax rolls?
It is not.
There's multiple things.
Yeah, Brian, just in regards to this, we mentioned the township cost-sharing option as an option, but none of the other slides are really labeled as options, but theoretically, another option would be elimination of this, correct?
Oh, yes.
Along those lines, legally, is this something that, once we do this, or if we did this, is it done forever? In terms of if we decide not to collect this next year, could we come back two years down the road, or a different board could sit here and say, actually, we do want to collect this? Or is it something that we have to opt out legally? Do you have an answer?
So it's a vote that occurs each year, whether we choose to make the tax or not. The question that you're asking, I would have to defer to council or to tax collector with that, specifically because the question is, one, if we can go back and get it, and two, what happens if the townships backfill us and tax all the way up? Do we have any rights to then push them back down? I'd have to get someone more sophisticated to answer that.
My understanding is that once a school district eliminates the per capita tax, it requires a voter referendum to reinstate that tax.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
Did you, I know you talk to your peers quite often, did you talk to other districts that eliminated it?
I did not.
And I don't know all of them in Montgomery County. I do believe, do we know it, Springfield did it? And do we know any others? No?
I know that Springfield eliminated, I don't know of any others.
Okay.
And that they did it, I think, two, three years ago.
I'm just curious if they, if they had any negatives or positives to say about it. I guess that's why I was asking.
If I remember correctly, a big part of their reason for eliminating it was the accuracy on the billing. They were finding a lot of residents were not being billed as they should be, and they were having difficulties in identifying all the people who should have been receiving the bill.
To piggyback on that, did they also have Burkheimer administering their...
I don't recall if they did or not.
Okay.
Are there other questions for Mr. Bricker at this point, before we turn it over to Mr. Enshaw, and recommendation from the discussion out of the Finance Committee?
I guess, just following up on Kim's question, are there other entities who do administer tax relief like this?
Yes, there are other school districts that do have this. Burkheimer has predominance in the collections with that area.
So I guess the question is, how do we determine who are collector of this taxes? Is it by contract with that collector?
Yes, we currently have a contract with Burkheimer, who makes the collections on this tax.
And is that an annual contract?
It's an annual contract that renews, an evergreen renewal each year.
In March, is that right?
In March. We have the rights to terminate it.
Okay, so if the board were to consider, or consider the option to eliminate this tax, they should do so before, let's say, February. Well, when is the notice needed?
I'm thinking it was 60 days notice. I think it was by January 31st, we drafted, I think.
Okay. What we'll do, just to make sure everyone knows, so we'll have that, there's a couple pieces of information, we'll get that also to the board via a filing memo, so everyone has that, just for certainty.
Okay. I think I've made it pretty clear over the past three, four years, as Dr. Zerbi reminded me, that I can see this tax go away, a number of reasons. One, and mostly as Mr. Bricker has pointed out, one is that the billing costs about, amount to approximately 10% of the revenues, which is highly inefficient. Generally, you want your billing cost to be 1% or less of the revenues that it generates. And even with the township kicking in, if they've agreed to do so, would be well above, still be well above that benchmark. There have been challenges relating to the billing population, and I have to believe that they continue today. There's more than just Shenondale as a retirement community in this district. There's Meadowwood and Warsester, there's a new one being built over near Collegeville, and there may be others on this I'm aware of. The student issue, I just learned this year, although it's not a significant number, that number could grow as word gets out about the ability to avoid this tax. And also questions about just generally, if somebody who's in the district and is either retired or for some other reason, they don't get picked up in the tax rolls for this tax. So it raises question about, is everybody paying the tax as they're legally required to do so? Another point is that even though the net revenue is $264,000, big number on its face, it's 0.3% of the district's budget. And that lost revenue could easily be recovered through the residential, through the real estate tax. The past few years, we've been well below the Act 1 index. I believe the Act 1 index for next year is 2.6, I think I read somewhere, and we've been generating surpluses. So a couple of options, either reducing expenses in the budget, or you make this part of the property tax going forward. And finally, in my view of this tax, it's just a nuisance. Writing that check for $14.70 every year is just, I could do without, so. My views on this tax, I just think it should go away, and it's, I don't think it would financially harm the district.
Thank you, Mr. Enshaw. Any other comments related to Mr. Enshaw's statements? So I'm just going to rehash what he said here. So the issues were the cost of billing, the population, if everyone's getting accounted for, student issues, equity, meaning, is everybody paying within the district, and the nuisance matter? Is that pretty much summing up? Okay. Any other comments from members of the board?
My only statement is, I agree, it's a complete nuisance. My only thing is that I think everyone should know that if we do not collect on this, that the Lower Providence and Warsester have the right to continue to charge up to this amount, and they will get all of this. So this can continue, and they will, it will just go to the Lower Providence and Warsester, so they could vote to that.
If I could respond real quick, my hope would be that they would follow our lead and eliminate on their end as well. Because if Warsester's collecting a dollar, for them to bill this, they would lose all of this. Because if Warsester's collecting a dollar, for them to bill this, they would lose money.
Agreed. I think it's the other area that could continue, though. So, it will still happen, and the townships will think it's us, and that's the unfortunate thing. And it's a $260,000. But I do agree, it is a nuisance.
Yeah, just, just the way I understand it, Tim, to make sure, though, on what Jen says is absolutely correct, but they would not be able to go to $15, because $5 is related to the school district, so it would be $10 that the townships could charge. So, the tax would go down in that case?
Yes.
Okay. So, I just have a quick question for you, Brian. So, the one, and I expect this will be thrown back in my face, but the, not for me, the, how do you reconcile the ability to char, to levy a tax to everybody that's a member of the taxing area, in this case, at $14.70 versus a property owner, which, at the end of the day, this would shift the $260,000, one way or another, back to property owners, and independent of an individual residing in the district? So, I just want to, I'm not saying that it's wrong, I just wanted to say how you reconcile moving it back towards property.
Well, technically, you don't have to. You could find cost savings elsewhere. That's another option, or some combination thereof.
And if there was no anticipation of property tax, I could probably say that, but it gets, it will get lost in the launch. At the end of the day, we're going to have to make up $260,000. I'm not saying that we can't find, but there'll be, that the ability to exactly identify that this savings comes from this elimination of a tax, at the end of the day, I don't think actually occurs.
That's also presuming that the basis of school funding remains with property taxes. I know it's one of those things that gets talked about over and over again, and nothing ever changes, but there is still that possibility, and it still comes from Harrisburg, that we could see another revenue strength.
Yeah, no, I feel like I'm channeling her, Brian. This is like, the perfect time to go, "This is Harrisburg's fault." That we're arguing about $14.70 as a district, not arguing, but to have to make a decision on eliminating this tax is ridiculous from state funding, so you're welcome, her.
I think it was brought up by Ms. Drummond, that are there other entities that collect this tax? And maybe what the board should direct us to do is find out and put an RFP out to see if there's a billing cost that, from an entity that would come in lower than what we're receiving right now. And if we were closer to 1% than we are to 10%, maybe that, in essence, makes it more viable. I don't know, I'm just, I'm just going to suggest that. I'm not saying that's the best.
You'll ever, you'll ever get there.
I'm not trying to, I'm looking at everybody but you. I'm looking at everybody but you. And I only mean that in a comical way. I respect your opinion, and I think, you got to understand that Tim and I recognize, you know, the challenge here with the expense and all this, but there's a, this is actually a big deal to make a determination, if it is so, your intent to remove it. Certainly, if you do, I would suggest that, that we have, you allow me to have the conversation with the townships, in order to see if we can partner with what was, and maybe, Brian, you'd said this, that they would follow suit. So, maybe it's worthwhile, if this board is interested in pursuing this to a greater degree, and obviously, preliminarily, before January, you want to make a decision, assuming that's what it says in the contract, and we'll get that specifics for you, but please know that, you know, it might be worth us having that conversation. Maybe that, that will help everyone. But if you don't want me to do that, that's fine as well. I just thought that would be helpful, because it might take away some of the skepticism of these temporary. Now, let me ask the solicitor, if the township would eliminate their taxes as well on this, so would there be a referendum required for both parties, or just the township, or just the school district?
In terms of reinstating it at some future date, I'd have to check on that.
So, should we check on that? I guess this is a question from the board.
Yeah, maybe, that's fine. I mean, it probably makes sense if you want to see if they tell them, "We're thinking about this," in which case, they'd have to pick up the billing costs or eliminate it. I don't know if that's, I mean, that makes sense to me, or what everyone else feels about that, but at the same time, and ask them about the, if they decide to continue, about the cost sharing side of it, because, and that just doesn't make sense, that they're not paying any of the freight to get the revenue.
Well, I say that, it's likely, if you look at Mr. Burkert's numbers, that I doubt if Warsester Township would participate in any of the cost sharing, just because of the minute amount. So, if the board's okay with that, I would probably, you know, approach Lower Providence, they have a more aligned share of this whole part. Any other comments?
Yeah, I think, and I'll say this often, but I wholeheartedly agree with Brian. I do. I do think, I think we should go to the townships, because clearly, I agree with Brian, this is, this is a nuisance tax. When I moved to Pennsylvania 20 years ago, this was one of those things where you just look at it, you shake your head, and you put your face in your palm, and you go, "I can't even believe I'm writing a check for $14.70." I understand Paul's concern about shifting burden back to property owners, but I think if you, if you think about what the per capita tax is, it's a tax on every person that's living in the township that is therefore living in some property, that is either paying the tax directly or indirectly as it is. So, yes, we're shifting the burden, but I also look at it as shifting the burden off of, however so slightly, off of a highly residential tax base, even a small, tiny, fractional, minute amount onto our commercial tax base, which is also a small fractional amount. So, I would wholeheartedly agree with this. I think we should move forward with it. My only, my only comment would be that maybe we want to budget with this in mind, and if our deadline, I mean, if our deadline is January 30th to renew for the next year, then I guess we have to make it as part of our preliminary budget. If it's not, and we've got more time than that, I would just leave it as a hurdle in the budget, because who knows what comes up in the next three months? But otherwise, I'm fully in favor of getting rid of this. But I do think it would be nice to do it in concert with both townships, and we all can just wash our hands of this nuisance.
So, if there aren't any other comments on this matter, what I'd like to do is, if the board is, unless I get other direction, is to work with the solicitor to determine what the, a removal would require for both entities, meaning the township and the district, and what their reinstatement would require, so that logically, we can go into this with as much information as possible, so that we can have a solid conversation. I then will gather any of the other information that was asked here, and provide this back to, again, the Finance Committee this coming month, and if the committee is pleased with the information that's shared, and with my conversation with the township, we certainly can have this item brought to the work session with, you know, either in October, or even November. Is that, is that fair?
Would it be possible by the October 9th Finance Committee meeting, possibly?
My idea is to come back to the Finance Committee in October.
You mentioned work session, I was wondering if you get it.
No, yeah, I said the Finance Committee meeting, then the work session. Yeah, once, once, once you're pleased with the information from the Finance Committee, go to the work session, and we're going to move it forward. Is it, Mr.?
I just want to say, I agree with Brian when you brought this up the last time. I just wanted to confirm, because it does sound like there has been a little bit of change here. So, is this a unanimous recommendation now from the Finance Committee? It sounds like Mr. Navarrett is on board, Ms. Cancril, I don't know. Is this a 100% we've?
I think what Dr. Zerby's going to do sounds fantastic.
Okay, then, sounds good to me.
Thank you, Mr. Burkert. Thank you, Mr. Earnshaw, the Finance Committee, and the members of the board that weighed in on that matter. That ends our presentations for this evening.
All right. So, our next order of business is the appointment of our new student board representatives and administration of oath of office. So, before I administer the oath of office, I'm thinking we should have a motion to approve, is that correct? Okay, so let's have a motion to approve the appointment of Mathacton High School juniors Serena Goodrich and Christopher Sletzer as student board representatives to the Board of School Directors for a term of two years, effective for the 2019-2020 school year. Ms. Drummond, and a second, Ms. Hull. Any comments from the board?
I would just quickly like to say, before you're all sworn in, I used to sit over there, and that was my favorite seat, because I used to tell the students when it was time that they could leave, because sometimes these meetings run really late, and they would all, they would look at me like, and so, just Mr. Winters, Ms. Cancril, Mr. Regina, please, and don't forget to tell them that. And I do not have the pleasure of knowing Serena, but I'm sure we're in good hands. And I would just like to say that I know we're in really good hands with Chris, because I don't know if he remembers, but he took care as a safety of my first going to school. And she used to say that, thank goodness, he was on the bus, so it's a pleasure. I almost didn't recognize you now that you're a fully grown man, but welcome.
So, would Serena Goodrich, please come forward? And I realize, and you see if you want to be out in front here, here's the oath of office.
You didn't vote.
We didn't?
I didn't put my hands up yet. Jump in the head here.
I'm sorry.
This is why I take control of the meeting. So, we have a motion, we have a second. Are there any other comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, and that motion carries 9-0, and now, we can administer the oath of office. So, I need you to repeat after me. I do solemnly swear or affirm
I do solemnly swear or affirm
that I will support, obey, and defend
that I will support, obey, and defend
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of this Commonwealth
and the Constitution of this Commonwealth
and that I will discharge the duties of the office
and that I will discharge the duties of the office
of student representative to the board with fidelity.
Representative student representative to the board.
Now, if we could please ask Christopher Sletzer to please come forward?
I've also known Chris for quite some time, but I don't have any embarrassing anecdotes, so you're lucky. So, you can repeat after me. I do solemnly swear or affirm
I do solemnly swear or affirm
that I will support, obey, and defend
I will support, obey, and defend
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of this Commonwealth
the Constitution of this Commonwealth
and that I will discharge the duties
I will discharge the duties
of the office of student representative
of the office of student representative
to the board with fidelity
to the board with fidelity
Congratulations.
Serena and Christopher, we will have these certificates framed and sent down to you later this week. Thank you so much, and congratulations.
All right, moving on now to reports. Mr. Earnshaw, Finance Committee report?
Thank you. The Finance Committee met on September 11th of 2019. The meeting was called order at 6:30. In attendance, all committee members. In addition, Mr. Glenn Willer from PFM was an invited guest at the meeting. We started the meeting a bit out of order with Mr. Willer's presentation from PFM, which is item 4A of the agenda, where we talked about the refinancing of existing bonds and remaining borrowing capability. Prior to Mr. Will leaving the meeting, we opened the meeting to courtesy of the floor, and during that first session, Jim Molly from Warsester requested a copy of the PFM handout. We then moved into the monthly financial reports, which included Mr. Burkert discussing and presenting the list of bills, treasurer's report, and the expenditures and revenues report. The monthly healthcare consortium report was not available for this meeting, and there were no budgetary transfers. The remainder of the discussion topics included the student activity accounts, the amounts paid to charter schools in fiscal 2018-19, the form of parent contracts. Ms. Burkert provided an update on the annual audit. We talked about the personal income tax, which was the per capita tax we had just reviewed. And then, during the second courtesy of the floor section, we heard from Mr. Winters from Lower Providence, Jim Molly from Warsester, and the meeting adjourned at 8:25 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Earnshaw. Property and transportation, Mr. Navarrett?
The Property and Transportation Committee met on September 9th. All committee members were in attendance. The committee discussed the final wrap-up of the 2018 capital projects, for which there's one outstanding item still in the Arcola Auditorium. We went through the capital projects from this summer, which were nearly complete at the time of our meeting. Then we talked a little bit about the 2020 capital projects, and Mr. Miller, Mr. Fretz presented the committee with proposed segmenting and ignorance modifications at the high school, both to improve traffic flows and enable improved access control, particularly after hours when the public is in the building. The committee then talked about the master plan for 2021 to 23. So, we had asked Fidavy to come back with a modified master plan for the next three years, both to get a sense of what the next project should be from a prioritization standpoint, and then also understand what the associated cost would be as we look towards funding and arrowhead. Under the non-agenda discussion items, the committee discussed the timing of the bids for the 2020 master plan, and that was discussed at the work session last week. It will come back in January or February, so that we can make one decision about projects and funding at one time. And then the committee inquired about the status of some of the traffic studies that had previously been done. Dr. Zerby informed the committee that those were being used for scope development on the sidewalk and paving projects, and they would be discussed when those projects come before the committee. Under transportation, Mr. Burkert recapped the issues from the first two weeks of school. He restated his goals process-wise, were first and foremost to get everybody on a bus, then next, to address safety issues such as unsafe stops, and then optimizing routes to address long ride times. He noted that the call center was going to close at the end of that week, having handled roughly half the volume of calls from 2018, so this is a notable improvement. He also noted that feedback on the new routing tiers, we moved this year to some two-tiered routes, two-tiered routes instead of three-tiered routes, have generally been positive. One of the biggest improvements and benefits of that has been that buses that may have been late, were delayed on an earlier run, where now, they'll make up their time. He also noted that some of the car line pickups, particularly at Warsester, have improved dramatically based on some new procedures. Under courtesy of the floor, we heard from Paul Winters, Lower Providence, Barbara Semeney of Lower Providence, John Andrews of Lower Providence, and Joe Bickelman of Audubon, being adjourned at 8:09 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Navarrett, for the Education Committee. Ms. Reese?
We met on September 4th. Everybody was in attendance, with the addition of Dr. Spiewak, who went first on the agenda. He covered the athletic coach, coach hiring process, which includes posting and advertising positions, candidate selection, interviews, recommendation in the formal hire. He reviewed coaching status and vacancies. Fall was in good shape, except at that time for JV field hockey, which has already been rectified. And he also reviewed the status of the activities handbook process. He filled us in on the club update form, end-of-year data form, application for new clubs, and the involvement of the district's points committee. Next up was Dr. Engstad, who went over the special education audit report. This audit, which we have discussed before, is required every five years. It took place in March 2019, but covered the compliance monitoring for the 2017-18 school year. The state reviews 23 categories, and Mathacton only had four areas to improve, and creates a corrective action plan to address those areas that set in place over the next three years. She also gave us a little peek of the whole child resource guide and whole child framework that the district is working on, that includes the five tenants. They have an initial draft for the brochure, which will be on the website in the future, and she'll keep us posted next month on that. Last, but certainly not least, we went over pre-K counts, which all of you saw at a presentation last week at the work session, and hopefully will be approved this evening and begin on October 7th. October 7th. As far as curriculum review with Dr. Katona, first up was just a mention of the honors review going on at Arcola. The district is looking into any adjustments that need to be made. More information will follow in October and November. We reviewed the supplemental contracts for summer curriculum, as well as mentor contracts and supplemental contracts for coordinators. Dr. Katona also shared the very positive results of Jump Start. It was another successful summer with wonderful, positive parent feedback. All elementary schools were represented with a total of 32 students. We also reviewed pathways to proficiency, which in a nutshell, the Keystone requirements are changing slightly for the class of 2022 and beyond, but the state has not communicated all benchmarks. Once all are known, the information will be provided to parents and students. High school and district administration is on top of assisting all students fulfill the needed graduation requirements. Ms. Ricky was next with professional development. She reviewed the opening days that occurred on August 26th and 27th. Most staff spent time in their buildings. The main focus is every student, every day. October 14th in-service will be another staff selected choice day, which was received well last year. Dr. Julie Colston is doing a special education program review, September 18th through the 20th, and she's visiting to observe our district's work with inclusive practice. And the last official agenda item was Ms. Ricky was looking for community members who may want to participate and ask for the board's help in making recommendations for people to be part of the Act 48 Committee. We reviewed the enrollment report and moved on to Courtesy of the Floor, where Kit Markle, Ralph Navarret, John Andrews, Joe Beckelman, and Jim Mollick shared their thoughts with us. Adjournment was at 9:10.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. For the Policy Committee, Ms. Hall.
The Policy Committee met on Monday, September 16th. The meeting was called to order at 6:31 PM. In attendance were Ms. Aubrey Larsonese, myself, Mr. Ryan, Mr. Winters, Dr. Zerby, and Ms. Montane. Policies moved forward for first reading include 124.1 Alternative Instruction, 201 Admission of Students, 204 Attendance, 208 Withdraw From School, 209 Health Exams and Screenings, 302 Employment of Superintendent or Assistant Superintendent, 309 Assignment and Transfer, 317.1 Educator Misconduct, and Policy 916 School Volunteers. Please note several of these policies included updates based upon changes in legislation as we noted last week. Policies carried over for further review include 004 Membership, 707 Use of Facilities, and 808 Food Services. There was no public input during Courtesy of the Floor, and the meeting adjourned at 8:27 PM.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. And for the intermediate unit, Mr. Ryan.
Thank you very much. A little bit longer of a report than usual. The MCIU Board met on August 28th. Some of the items to note from that meeting are the MCIU received a clean audit from the PA Department of Auditor General for the limited procedures engagement. The Board approved 10 new and proposed budgets, the largest of these being the State Early Intervention Program budget in the amount of approximately $22 million. It was a very busy month for personnel items, as there were over 13 pages with various employment matters approved. There was also discussion about five additional pre-K counts classrooms. We heard about some of this last week at the work session, and pending approval this evening, Mathacton will be the host of one of those new additional pre-K classrooms. Work on the IU's 1605 Building, their early learning academy, is currently in the active construction phase and is expected to last the entire school year. There was an update on the Harrisburg Recovery Project, as it's been named. Last spring, the MCIU was asked by Governor Wolf and the Pennsylvania Department of Education to run the operations of the Harrisburg School District. It has been a very rewarding but in-depth process so far, and the team is making significant progress already. A successful opening day event was held on August 19th for the Harrisburg School District, and there is a renewed sense of hope and excitement amongst the staff. Finally, I really wanted to draw attention to something that the workforce development program is embarking on. There was some empty space in the IU's 2 West Lafayette Street Building. That's their main building that they have. This space was originally intended to be used by an outside vendor to supply coffee and light fare to the members of the IU. Unfortunately, nothing ever materialized based off of that, as the outside vendors and stuff didn't necessarily want to get involved in a small venture like that. So now the workforce development program, which has substantially grown in size over the years, will be using some of this space for some much-needed office space, but the other part of the open space will be used for what they are calling barista buddies. This space will now be utilized by IU students who will be opening their own coffee shop that will provide excellent instructional and workforce development skill opportunities for their students with disabilities. It is expected that construction for this will be completed by December or January, and this is just a fantastic example of the creativity and the innovation that comes from the IU. That's all.
It's great to hear. Thank you, Mr. Ryan. North Monco Technical Career Center, Ms. Drummond and Ms. Reese.
We met on September 16th, and as most of you are aware, the superintendents take terms, and Dr. Dietrich from North Penn is back as the superintendent on record at the JOC. And the director, Gina, mentioned it was just a great opening for their teachers. Something to note about North Monco teachers are many of them come from their fields of expertise and are not, some of them are not educators for a very long time. So their in-service is very different than some other in-services, and they spent, met a lot of work on restorative practice, which is good in the classroom, and they gave good feedback. In fact, one of the staff members stood up to say that it's his, it was his 28th year at North Monco, and it was the, not just due to the in-service, but due to the new director there, that it was his smoothest re-entry back into school in 28 years. So that was really, really, really nice to hear. We reviewed the audit report and had our normal business, and the director did say enrollment is up, and there's a waitlist now because things change over there and students become part-time or full-time, and we'll have the official enrollment number in October.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. I'm not sure if our student board representatives, you do? You guys came prepared. I love it. All right, guys, go ahead.
Over the course of the school year, the, I would say, defining characteristic of the year so far has been the implementation of the Smart Pass system as a replacement for the traditional paper pass systems. For hall passes, it's a phone app that can also be used on the Chromebooks, and we've seen a decrease, I believe, in the vandalism that's been taking place in the school bathrooms and the vaping epidemic that is taking place at the high school. We have more hall monitors due to the app's ability to kind of see all the passes in progress at the time, and overall, I would say the switch has been very fluid. There haven't been any disruptions, and most of the students are completely okay. And so I would say it's a win-win. Thank you.
And then we just wanted to say a little bit something about the football team, and just say that they've been having a great year so far, which compared to other seasons have not been so great. And they're currently 2-3, which is awesome for them. And looking at the way they're going, they're definitely going up, and they're going to have a lot of major milestones, including the homecoming game, which I have heard from many students they're very excited for, and homecoming itself, especially with the Google form or survey of getting to choose our spirit days, which I know people like.
It's funny, sometimes I forget how much I miss the student representative reports. We don't get them all summer, so it's great to hear from you guys. It's great to have you here. The Mathacton Education Foundation, I do not see Mr. Beamer, Ms. Krelvich here, so I'm assuming they are off doing the good work at the foundation, and we will have an update from them soon. And that brings us to Communications, and Ms. Kelly.
I have a few items I'd like to share. Got two pages today. So parents of high school students are invited to register for our annual Financial Aid Night, which takes place on Thursday, September 26th, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM at the high school. The event is designed to help families learn more about the process of applying for aid through the Free Application for Federal Student Aid, better known as FAFSA, as well as the CSS Profile through the College Board. There are still a few seats available. Families have until tomorrow to register. Look for the link on the district's website under upcoming events. ELD Parent Information Night is Thursday, October 3rd, from 6:30 PM to 8:30 PM at Arrowhead Elementary School in the cafeteria. It's an evening for district families to learn about Mathacton's English Language Development Program, connect with community resources, and more. Mathacton School District is happy to support the efforts of Mathacton Education Foundation as it prepares for the 2019 Apex Awards on Thursday, October 10th. The ceremony will recognize those who have achieved distinction, outstanding accomplishment, or made significant contributions within their professions in the Mathacton community. Production is underway for the next installment of the district's video series showcasing the pride of Mathacton. We are featuring Mathacton staff, who are also Mathacton grads, and I can tell you, there's a lot of them. The anticipated date for release will be around mid-October. And last but certainly not least, building strong and positive relationships in our school community is very important. Earlier this month, Dr. Zerby and Nikki Krelvich, Executive Director of the Mathacton Education Foundation, rode the bus to Arrowhead School with some very excited but well-behaved students. Dr. Zerby and Mrs. Krelvich greeted students and families at each stop. Of course, I was there with the camera, which means there's a snazzy little video available for your viewing pleasure, so please check it out on our website if you haven't already. Also, a special thank you to Kim Musser and her student, who helped us organize what turned out to be a very well-received event. The district is excited to continue these elementary school bus tours, school bus tours, and as the school year progresses. So please keep an eye out on our website and make sure to follow Mathacton School District on Facebook and Twitter, if you're not already, to see where they end up next. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. And now for our superintendent's report, Dr. Zerby.
Thank you, Ms. President. This evening, there are a number of personnel advisements that are listed there, but I want to speak about something that we've had a conversation about last year, and I just want to give the board an update. So I want to talk about the Gifted Education Program here in the district and give the board and the public some understanding of where we are, because we said almost, you know, four or five months ago that we were going to do a review of that, and that's exactly what we're doing. So the Mathacton School District is conducting a review of the K-12 Gifted Educational Services in an effort to ensure that programs and programming remain consistently aligned with the best practices outlined by the National Association of Gifted Children and the mission of the Mathacton School District. The review will be led by Dr. Engstad and Director of People's Services and myself, along with guidance and support from Sean Lockinger, currently with Sweet Stevens, Katz, and Williams Law Firm, and formerly a PA State Hearing Officer for Gifted Educational Services. So as a person in the firm with our solicitor, he comes with unique experiences that can help guide our teachers and Dr. Engstad and myself through this process. The review will be, will include input and feedback from gifted and regular education teachers, parents, and billing administrators. And at this point, we've created an outline which will get us through an intended presentation in February of 2020 before the Board. At this point, we met, we met on September 6th with all the Gifted Education teachers in the district. Our goal was to start with, where are we? We did a self-assessment based on the National Association of Gifted Children's outline for doing that. We're reviewing that information, we're then coming back on a number of occasions and developing an understanding of where we are, where we want to go, and looking at other best practices. So please look for a parent survey, a teacher survey, and certainly a student survey at certain levels to get feedback into this process. My goal is to take this information, create a section on the district website so that we keep everyone apprised of the progress that we're making. So I hope that gives you a good summary that where we are and the progress that we're making. So thank you for your support on that. That ends my report.
Can I just ask a real quick question, Dr. Zerby? There had been several, I can't keep track, but there had been several emails over the summer from different people asking about that, the gifted review. I just was, wanted to know if they have been made aware of what you just said.
I think that once we get all the materials that we have at this point, and we can post something up on the website, our intent is to inform our current student, or family population that this is what we're doing and make them aware that they can go there for that. So we have not done that yet.
Okay. All right. So at this point, we will take public comment on board action items. This is an opportunity for residents to comment on matters that are to be decided upon, as outlined on the agenda. Board of Directors may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of those comments, and as always, it's very helpful if you can tell us what part of the agenda you are referring to, so that it can make us a little bit more efficient in responding when we get there. Mr. Andrews?
I have three items. Number one, there was a vote earlier at this meeting without opportunity for public I certainly would not have opposed the student representatives. The second item is that when elected directors are sworn in, it's preceded by evidence that they won in the election. You know, the vote counts are announced. With regard to the student representatives, I think it would be helpful to have some kind of summary comments as to how they succeeded to their positions. You know, there's a process involved, and I think that it's worthy to make public note of that. The last item is that there's a policy to be voted on this evening relative to superintendent and assistant superintendent appointments, where apparently the only change is to change the notification period for a superintendent near the end of his contract from 150 days to 90 days in the instance of where the board is not seeking to renew the contract. And I think that's a drastic change, and I think there should be some, you know, explanation of the thought process relative to the suggested change. Thank you.
Dr. Mollick?
You know, I guess I agree with John on your motion, vote, no public comment. You understand the procedure for a motion, vote, and public comment, right? I don't have to go over that with you. Was it just a simple mistake, or? And the reason I ask, is there anything else on this agenda that you're going to take a motion, vote, that we don't know about? Maybe you could tell us, because if that's the way you're going to do things, you know, I know you don't really care about the public, so. And the reason I'm bringing up this public comment stuff, if you remember at the 7/23/19 board meeting, I asked you a bunch of questions, then I answered my own questions. Remember that? And you gave me some flippant remark, and then told me And you gave me some flippant remark, and then told me that we'll answer your questions when we get to that point in the agenda, as we have been, like it's some common practice. While I'm back and reviewing the videotapes, your statement was false. There's nothing to back up your statement in the videotapes, because you have not answered questions before. It's nice that you're going forward, making a little announcement, but let's get it straight. That wasn't your policy. My question is, Bond Resolution 10F. What are the fees associated with the bonds? Going to answer that one, or do I have to wait? Is the 2019 AA bond being used to refinance any bonds? And what is the 2019 AA bond being used for? Nine million bucks. Can you tell me? Because it really doesn't do me any good not to know till after you vote. The 2019 A bond is being used for capital projects listed in Exhibit A. Have you seen Exhibit A? This is your master plan. When was the approval for all these projects getting done? Was it here at the board meeting that I missed? I mean, can you tell me when all these were approved to get done? Because you're borrowing money to do these projects. When did the board approve all that? Can you tell me that one? Okay, keep looking at the clock. I've got plenty of time. Any of these bonds being used for the new Arrowhead? I've got a good minute to go. No answers before you make your vote and your motion and your vote? No answers for the public, so we can give you input? Here's another question. The total interest for the 2019 A $5 million bond is almost double the 2019 AA $9 million bond. The total interest for the $5 million bond is 2.86 million. Total interest for the $9 million bond is half of that, or 1.9 million. Why is the $5 million bond associated with almost $1 million more interest? Can you tell me that one? So, it's hard for me to make a public comment with no information. I would say you need to reevaluate your bond situation before you vote on it. Thanks.
Mr. Bickelman.
My question is about the bills list. There's a check number 195140 to the California University of Pennsylvania for $3,096. Looks like it's for some 700-level courses. I just want to know the details of that, who's taking the courses, and how come it's not a reimbursement for successful course, grade, and attendance? Usually, they get reimbursed. I don't know what this is exactly. The other thing I'd like to talk about is the payments to the mentors. The teachers get paid an additional amount of money to be mentors to new teachers. Mr. Winters brought up a good comment. Why do we have to pay a teacher $900 and some dollars to mentor a new teacher that's in the building when we have, well, they're getting a salary anyway? And, you know, we have principals, assistant principals, department chairs in the buildings, too. So, it's hard to imagine a teacher not wanting to help a younger teacher without getting paid. Mr. Winters brought it up in light of the corporate world, not helping somebody unless you get paid. Just seemed unusual. The department chairs, I think we talked about that, too. The department chairs are getting an amount of money, and it was said that the high school department chairs teach one less period, plus they get paid. So, it's just unusual that they teach one less period. Instead of teaching five periods, they teach four periods. And, you know, so they're getting less time to teach, and, you know, they're probably a more seasoned teacher that should be in front of the kids. And they also get paid a salary for, you know, the seven and a half hours a day that they work. So, just something to think about.
Thank you, Mr. Bickelman. Anyone else, public comment on board action items? May I have a motion to approve the work session meeting minutes for the meeting held on August 20th, 2019, and the board meeting minutes for the meeting held on August 27th, 2019, as attached? Ms. Cancro and a second, Ms. Drummond, are there any comments from the board on these? Seeing none, all those in favor. Motion carries, nine zero. Fiscal items, Mr. Burkhardt?
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight for your approval is the list of bills, the treasurer's report, contracted services to prove the extension of Karen Mossup as an independent contractor for a fee of $5,000 to the end of October 2019. First student will be reimbursing the school district for this expense, two master plan projects, and two bond resolutions, 19-07 and 19-08.
It's my recommendation that the board president consider taking items 10F both separately, and that there should be a roll call associated with that.
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. Let's start with the fiscal items 10A through C. May I have a motion to approve the list of bills, treasurer's report, and budgetary transfers? Mr. Navarrett and a second, Ms. Reese, are there any comments from the board on these Mr. Winters, go ahead.
Tim, do you have any answer to the public question related to the bill?
I have the topics for strategic pining. I have to find out exactly what it was for.
As a follow-up, is it generally our practice to reimburse after the fact?
After they get their grades, yes.
Okay, so this would be something different?
I'd have to look it up to be sure.
No, I appreciate that. You unfortunately don't have everything at the top of your head. I understand that. Any other comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor. Motion carries, nine zero. May I have a motion to approve the contracted services for Karen Mossup, as posted here on the agenda? Ms. Drummond and a second, Mr. Winters, any comments from the board? Mr. Enshaw?
Not so much a cognitive question, but what's the long-term plan here? Is this the last month, and then revert back to first student? Or what's kind of the thinking there?
The first student is actually interviewing for routers and trying to figure out how they're going to handle that. They're in the process. Dr. Zerby and I actually have a meeting with first student this week. We'll see where they are with that, and then we can try and devise a long-term plan.
Any other comments on this? Okay, all those in favor? The motion carries, nine zero. Moving on to master plan projects. May I have a motion to approve items E1 and 2 of the master plan projects as presented? Mr. Navarrett and a second, Ms. Hull, any comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries, nine zero. Okay, moving on to the bond resolutions. Dr. Zerby, just to clarify, you recommended taking F1 separate and then F2? Okay. So, may I have a motion to adopt Resolution Number 19-07 as presented, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds of this school district for the purpose of providing funds for various capital projects consistent with the school district's capital plan? Ms. Drummond and a second. Ms. Reese, comments from the board?
Again, just a couple of questions. One, can we get confirmation, so Mr. Willard's here, can we get confirmation on what the costs are for each of these offering, for this offering? Because from the work session we went here, but I watched the video, it sounded like it was $50,000, but I thought from our finance committee meeting, it was $100,000 or so once you add in PFM fees, legal fees, et cetera.
Well, I think for the Series A bonds, they're about $70,000, plus the bond discount is about $40,000. And for the second one, they're a little bit less than that. I think they're $60,000 plus a bond discount of about $20,000. Those are the fees.
Okay, so, in total, the one was about $110?
That's about right, yeah.
About, what was the last two numbers again? I'm sorry.
About 90, yeah.
About 90, yeah. Okay. There's one thing that was new in the presentation last week that wasn't at the finance committee meeting, was the ability to combine the refunding, which is F2 here, along with a $2 million incremental borrowing.
Yeah, I showed that as a new option.
I presume that would save on some of the costs. Is that correct?
Just a little bit. Just the bond discount, basically.
So, you'd still be cutting?
Cut that in half, yeah. The transaction fees would be the same. The bond discount is a function of how many bonds you issue, so that's one that would go down.
All right, so there's no, by combining, there's no savings on any bond council fees, or?
No, we'd already taken that into account by breaking it out into two different issues.
Got it, okay. All right. And then, my other question relating to the first one, which will be used for future capital projects. Exhibit A does include a listing of projects under the master plan. Does that mean that the proceeds from this bond offering would be restricted to be used only for master plan projects?
You could use it for any capital projects.
Any capital projects.
Yeah, any that, even that have changed into the future, so it gives you a lot of flexibility.
Okay, okay. All right, thanks.
And, Mr. Willard, just real quick. I think my understanding, you've explained this before, is that we have to use the money, particularly related to these fundings, in the next three years. So, these are identifying that we have, it's showing that we have enough projects in the pipe that will justify us going for this debt.
Yes, you have to have reasonable expectations you'll spend it all in three years.
But, it could be used for master plan, new Arrowhead, KCBA fees, or some other new capital project that may not be known yet. Always the capital in nature.
Yes.
Within three years.
Just a general comment about both of these items, because it doesn't pertain to just one as opposed to the other. But I brought up the question about the possible option of being able to pay off existing debt, and, you know, what that would mean with our ending proposed effort for year after year. And this isn't necessarily a question for you, but just more of a statement here that, you know, in seeing what we have in both of these exhibits with how much, you know, fiscal year debt service you'll have, the ability to pay off the first set of bonds with the $3.7 million, it's basically four years left of that. There's substantial payments for that series of bonds that will come over the next four years. One's like $500,000, then it jumps to like a million, a million, a million. We're replacing that currently with bonds that are only calling for, you know, $215,000 for the first year, and then the other one is, I don't have it right in front of me here, but it's just the idea that, I mentioned, how do we manage spikes in the future? We're going to have substantial jumps from one to the other, to the other. At one point in time, we get from $675,000 year over year for our debt service. So, things of that nature are helpful to have in the beginning of these discussions so that we can kind of manage our overall debt service, as opposed to making one decision at one point in time without regard to what's happening in the future. So, I just hope that moving forward when these types of things happen, that we do identify and know what bonds are currently available for refinancing or to be paid off early, and we pay attention to that when we're issuing new debt, because if one's at the end, we're going to be paying a lot more than the one that's going to be at the beginning, and that difference there can help manage your debt. So, just kind of the future, I mean, we're beyond that. We already said we're doing with the surpluses and everything, but I think moving forward, that is a very important thing that this board will need to keep in mind with future borrowings. I just want to say that.
So, do we have any other comments on Resolution 19-07? Okay. So, now, we need to take a roll call vote? Okay. Mr. Winters?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Okay, so with a vote of eight to one, this motion passes. And now, let's move on to adopting Resolution 19-08 as presented, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds of the school district for the purposes of refunding the Series A of 2012 and Series of 2013. I feel like there's something missing there with minimum debt service savings of $100,000. Fair motion? Mr. Navarrett and a second, Ms. Reese, comments from the board? Mr. Enshaw?
Again, just a question. I know that last week's meeting, I think the next day, the Fed reduced rates by 25 basis points, so I'm kind of wondering if you had any updated information about where this refinancing, refunding would stand, and whether or not that $100,000 would be achievable where we sit today?
Well, it's kind of ironic. The Fed lowered the federal funds rate and interest rates on these bonds have gone up by about 10 or 15 basis points. So, right now, the $100,000 is probably not achievable today. We're probably at a, I'll say, $50,000 kind of number today, so we would be on hold. But, we're asking for authorization to be in a position to go, should the market come back.
And if I remember correctly, there is a cost if this should never materialize, of like $5,000 to $7,000 or so?
Yeah, the cost would be advertisement, but I think we can, I think, I said it was advertisement, but I think we can cover that in the first ad for the new money that was just approved. And then, the second is, the rating agencies charge, I think it's about 60%, if they rate the bonds and then we never issue them.
Other comments from the board? All right, we'll take our roll call vote for this. Mr. Winters?
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Okay, so we've got one, two, three. That motion carries with a vote of six to three. Personnel items, Mr. Regina?
Good evening. We have a few items for the board's approval this evening. We have one item for classified resignations. We have two items for the employment of professional positions. I know last week, we did talk about two other professional positions that we're filling. We're awaiting paperwork, they'll be on next month's board agenda, but we do have candidates that have accepted both the Spanish position at our COLA and the .5 ELD position as well. We have one employment for classified position. We have one professional uncompensated leave. We have 10 supplemental contracts, that is four additions from last week. One, as was referenced earlier, was the assistant field hockey coach. One is the new boys' lacrosse coach. One is the fall event supervisor position, and the last item is the activity contracts have been updated. We have one item for classified subs, one item for the volunteer list, and two items for community education.
Okay, are there any items on this list that the board would like to take separately? Mr. Enshaw?
A number of items within K.
Okay, so we'll take K separately. Anything else? Okay, so then, can I have a motion to approve items A through J, L through N, under personnel this evening? Ms. Cancro and a second, Ms. Drummond, any comments from the board on these items? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries, nine zero. And now, may I have a motion to approve, actually, let me clarify. Mr. Enshaw, do you want these taken individually under K?
Well, you could combine 1, 5, 7, and 8, if you'd like.
Kim, I'd like to take 6 separately.
Okay, so we're just going to go through these separately. All right, can I have? All right, can I have a motion to approve item K1 for the supplemental contract for our college cheerleading coach? Ms. Drummond, Ms. Cancro, comments from the board? Ms. Reese?
I'm sorry.
Just getting ready to vote.
Just getting ready.
Okay, all those in favor? That one carries nine zero. All right, now moving on to a motion to approve the supplemental contracts for department coordinators. Ms. Reese, and a second. Mr. Winters, comments from the board on this one?
I have a question, Mr. Regina. I just want to clarify a statement that was made earlier. So the high school department chairs are only teaching four periods as opposed to five?
That is correct.
And there are additional duties that are expected for this?
That is correct.
Okay. Is any of this?
I just want to make a clarification. We're specifically talking about high school.
That is correct.
Yeah, so it's not a quantity type, Mr.?
Is any of this subject to our collective bargaining agreement?
No.
Okay. Any comments from anyone else? All right, so...
Wait, 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 wait. So I misunderstood our conversations from previous weeks. So you're saying that practice of allowing high school department chairs to have an additional, a supplemental contract, to be paid additional amounts of money, and still, and then achieve, have the additional benefit of teaching one less period throughout the day, is not a contractual obligation, that is a district practice? Is that correct?
So to make a clarification, what, in terms of contractual matters, whether they're specifically detailed within a, an agreement, or they happen to be what's considered past practice, are equally enforceable. And so my, just to clarify for that and the board, so this is not a new matter, and it shouldn't be known, that the administration is certainly aware of that and recognizes the challenges associated with this conversation, but please know that doing anything different would create a challenge in the terms of the contractual matters with the association at that level. Unless otherwise, it was agreed upon by both parties to be changed in the future.
Okay, so fortunately, I'm legally not allowed to be part of the negotiations with the teachers' union. So in the middle school level, where teachers also teach periods, how many, what is our practice, what is our past practice in having department chairs teach the number of periods that they teach? Do they teach four, five, six, 12? What do we teach?
They teach the equivalent of other teachers.
Okay, thank you.
So just to clarify further, so at the middle school level, department coordinators teach the same as the other teachers, but they get a supplemental contract for being a department chair. At the high school level, the department coordinators teach fewer periods, but they also get a supplemental contract. Is that accurate? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just one of the things that I think is important, that Dr. Zerby made that clarification between what's in the contract and what's best practice, that I think it's important for the board as we go through items like this to identify those publicly of, you know, the things that are not necessarily in a contract, but we do provide for our teachers, and that these are, to be frank, they're extras, right? These are things that are not technically in there. So I just, I would say with that, whether it's Mr. Regina over there or Dr. Zerby, to, you know, identify some of these things that are on here that, you know, truly are best practice versus contractual obligations.
I just want to make clarification. I think you're saying, and I can't hear you correctly, so I just, you're saying best practice versus past practice, so I just want to clarify which one you're referring to.
Sorry, past practice.
Yes, so there's, I want to make the board...
I was wondering why the confused face over there.
No, it's, but it's an important distinction, and while, you know, this is maybe a conversation for another time, it certainly should be noted that there is a difference between the two. And the administration is not saying that this is best practice. We are clearly saying that it is past practice, but we aren't saying that there aren't some reasons why some of this should be in place. So I think it takes a little more detail, and to your point, Mr. Ryan, you know, that should be, you know, a further detailed discussion and review to share in detail with the board, so.
And I apologize for the misstatement.
So also as a point of clarification here, I think that it is possible, and sounds like advisable, to approve the supplemental contracts, but simultaneously, we can direct the administration to work on amending our practice. So that's something that I think that we as a board could consider as part of this conversation. So we aren't withholding these supplemental contracts, but we could, you know, look into and explore ways that we can adjust our practices to make it what I would call a little bit more equitable.
Again, what I can do is I can make recommendations of how those past practices can be adjusted. Those past practices are actually, whether you realize it or not, in your hands, meaning that through contract negotiations with the association, with our assistance, of course, and guidance. So what we, what we'll do, assuming, assuming everyone's in agreement with this conversation, Mr. Regina and I will make a recommendation about how that will work. We'll likely also include Dr. Petona in the process, and we will provide that information to the board, as, as everyone's likely aware that, you know, the contract negotiations is, is just around the corner, starting in January of 2020.
Yeah, and I, I think we have to be careful here to make sure we understand the educational benefit and not just make a broad assumption, which maybe I jumped the gun in the Education Committee a little bit about that, but I definitely think it's something we need to look at to understand. And I mean, part of the responsibility is to evaluate their, their department, so that allows them the time to support their department. So understanding the pros and cons of it is something that we should consider in the next contract. As, as a point, though, I see some K-12 co-coordinators, so clarification on, on who is not teaching at the, teaching at the high school and not teaching five classes would be helpful in that evaluation.
Any other comments from the board? Okay, we have a motion on the table, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries eight to one. Okay, now can I have a motion to approve, retroactively approve supplemental contracts for the list of mentors? Ms. Drummond, and a second. Ms. Reese, comments from the board?
This is clearly part of our contract, so.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Eight to one. Retroactively approve supplemental contracts for instructional software support specialist? Ms. Hall, and a second, Mr. Navarrett. Comments from the board?
Just a question, could you provide some clarification on what this is, the nature of this support is?
Just clarify which item is that, Mr. Earnshaw?
It's the instructional software support specialists.
These are the, let me pull up that agenda item. These are the individuals that are the I triple S positions. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'm just trying to get an understanding of what the nature of this additional work is.
Should I take this one?
Yeah, I'm not quite sure I know that answer very well, to be honest.
So these, there's, and I don't have the attachment in front of me, but I imagine that, that what the attachment has is a list of individuals per building who provide supplemental technology support for members within that building. So as, to understand that this is structured, we have a technology department who mostly deals with the operational hardware, software fixes. However, there are individuals, and that's who's before you, in each building, along with three district-wide technology integrators who provide the curriculum. So we, so this is a mechanism to provide on-premises support when there's a need for a quick hardware or technology setup, or to support another teacher in a classroom. So this, these are positions that have been in place for a number of years. The title probably, as we go through the review of the job descriptions, the title is likely going to change, so it's not reflective of the actual work that they do. They do, they do more of support with, with the teachers, and they do set up certain classrooms to help support the integration of the technology in the rooms. So it's, so it's really not software support so much, but...
And I've asked about, sorry, Brian, to cut you off. I've asked about these positions before because everybody who has these positions, well, not, I believe, are classroom teachers, so they're busy. So I've asked about these positions before because what I do as a teacher, like today, I had a technology issue. I called this extension 6200, which I call a lot, and the tech people answer it if they're available. If not, I send them an email. And I asked about these positions because I was like, how can so-and-so help a teacher when they're in the middle of teaching? They must have to, you know, go at the end of the day or go during their prep. But I think this is one of those things where we have to ask ourselves, and not to make their jobs more difficult. But I know at tech support, at my school, when I called today, they literally sent me an email to prove that they helped me, and they put it in some tracker. And I'm not suggesting that these teachers have to put something in a tracker, but I would be curious to have one day, you know, some idea of what exactly they're doing for this amount of money. But I have brought this up before when we've approved this. And I'm not saying it's not needed, because you, we don't have enough tech people like, you know, to, to help everyone every day, I would imagine, and this supplements that. But I would be curious exactly what is going on, because it might be that Teacher X is literally every day putting out a tech fire. I don't know.
I think that's a good point. Another question that I have just in looking at this list is we have two at Eagleville. So it's, that compensation total is split, it's not doubled. Got it. I didn't do the math real quick to check that, so that clarifies my question. Anyone else?
So is just generally, I mean, I don't want to dwell on this too much longer, but is this work generally being done before, during, or after the school day?
All three.
All three, okay.
I'll just add, from my experience, maybe that direct experience, but these are, these people do provide valued, ground-level, immediate technical support for a lot of the educational bags, applications, smart boards, that kind of stuff. So I know, I can tell you just from my personal experience, it is used and valued within the schools.
All right, all those in favor? Motion carries nine zero. Let's see, let's retroactively approve the supplemental contract for the lifeguard for special needs students. I have a motion, Ms. Drummond, and a second, Ms. Cancro. Comments from the board? None. All those in favor? Motion carries nine zero. Retroactively approve the supplemental contracts for curriculum writing per the attached list. Ms. Reese, and a second. Ms. Drummond, comments from the board?
Kim, pursuant to Section 1103-J of the Public Official and Employee Ethics Act, I'm abstaining from voting on this item because my wife is one of the six teachers selected for the supplemental contract. As part of the Ethics Act, I have filed the required written memorandum with the board's secretary prior to this evening's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Navarrett. Any other comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Okay, so the motion carries 711. Correct me if I'm wrong, I think I can go through seven through 10, right?
Keep 10 separate.
Okay.
I'm sorry, and nine.
All right, we're going to approve the supplemental contract for the JV field hockey coach and the varsity boys' lacrosse coach. Ms. Reese, and a second. Mr. Ryan, comments from the board? All those in favor? Motion carries. Ms. Reese, did you have your hand up there? Oh, I'm sorry. Opposed?
Oh, no, I didn't.
Okay, okay.
So much hand raising, I'm sorry.
Okay, so that, that vote was nine zero. Somebody tell me if I'm wrong here.
We'll say it was nine zero.
All right. Can I have a motion to approve the supplemental contract for the list of activity sponsors? Ms. Reese, is there a second? Mr. Navarrett, comments from the board? Mr. Earnshaw?
Just a couple of questions. I looked through the list. I understand a lot of these activities, and I think a lot of it makes sense, but there's also things like bus duty in here for a number of instances, and also there's some items where I know certain costs are covered by like ticket sales. Would that offset some of these, like the musical and might be one or two other things in here?
So, so the, so the list that you have before you is a list that is inclusive of the supplemental contracts associated with the MEA contract by which the positions and the, the compensation associated with the position falls under the points program. So as an addendum, or an MOU, I'm sorry, to the MEA contract, there is a points compensation calculation process. So bus duty and a couple others that you see that aren't regularly considered supplemental contracts where they're, they're associated with doing clubs or activities directly associated with students are also paid in that same mechanism. Again, that, while it's on this list, it is broken out, well, will be broken out into the budget when we look at athletics, we look at clubs and activities, and then we look at what are considered other duty types, so that we can clearly articulate what's happening legislatively. Does that clarify your question? So they're in the list because they get calculated at this time of the year under the points program. So it doesn't necessarily represent all the clubs, just solely clubs, as you would commonly think that's what is included here?
A couple suggestions going forward, then. I would suggest going forward, break out what's a true activity versus a duty regardless of how it's calculated.
We've done that in this most recent Friday memo. You have the list of, of activities as sponsors, and that is, is a different list than, in totality, than what you see in front of you. This just happens to be as a process of HR to get the approval for supplemental contracts.
Okay. And then, I'm not sure if this is done, but like I would suggest with the upcoming MEA contract, maybe you can ask, tell me if this was looked at or not. There's a lot of comparisons to where Bethakka teachers rank in salary against other, other districts. I think we got to be taking a look at some of these duty supplemental contracts, because I know for a fact certain things are not happening in other districts. So if we're going to compare salaries, we should be comparing the entire compensation package and not just picking all the pieces up.
Just a, just a comment, the point taken, well taken. It, I would just say, it depends, the point system is not usually very transferable from one district to the next, to be able to do the true compensation, because years, years accelerator, et cetera. But I can say in the case of the mentors, I think the mentors is, we are on the far end of the, of the, of the curve of how much we pay for mentorship.
I will just add to Brian's and Paul's comment, and just say, it's not even, well, of course, when you're talking about a budget, it's about money, but it's the opportunity to, not just make extra, there are things, the opportunities given. So it might not be that Teacher X makes this amount, and Teacher Y makes this amount. But I do think compensation-wise, that's a good thing to bring up. You know, some people can't take a supplemental contract due to their lives. Right?
I believe that would be the case.
Yeah, so I'm just saying, it is something good to look at, because it is part of a person's compensation.
Well, let me just comment on that for a second. You're not incorrect, and the questions are rather very appropriate. But what's important is, we as a board, and as a community, there are certain expectations for certain things to be provided. These supplemental agreements, while they challenge us from a fiscal perspective and an understanding perspective, I can tell you that, and is everything, you know, perfect? I'm not saying that. But what I can tell you is that these things allow for a lot of good work to be done between teachers and students, both on an individual basis and a group basis. And I can say that we're rather fortunate to be able to, you know, have this conversation at this time to do that, because not all districts have the ability to, you know, to bring these opportunities forward to our students. I mean, the clubs in this district, you know, are just amazing, and I know you know that, and I know you support it, but I just got to tell you that, while it's our responsibility to make sure that you have all the information necessary as we move through a budget or contractual conversation, I want you to know that, and while there might be work to do, it's important for us to recognize that this is some of the, these contracts allow for some of the students who may not necessarily want to come to school because of math, science, social studies. It's these opportunities, in addition to what we generally provide, keep them interested, keep them in school, and make them, you know, a success. So just keep that in mind as we go through this. I know you know that, I'm not saying that you don't, but I think it's important that it's heard in the public face as we're scrutinizing some of this. And it should be also known that this is before you for some of the first times in a long time. And with Mr. Gina coming on board, we did a thorough review of the things that, you know, we ought to be doing as administration with the board. And as such, we felt that it was most appropriate to bring these things. So your questions aren't, are not, are expected, because you haven't been, you know, seeing these things before. So I just want to make sure you know that we know, and that everybody else watching the video knows where we're at on this process. So thank you for the questions, keep them coming. We want to make sure that you're informed, so that we can make the best decisions.
And I just want to reiterate, I'm not suggesting getting, not having reading Olympics so that someone can't have a supplemental contract, or any of these things. I think what Brian is discussing is some of those things he's unclear about why we're paying for it. I know he's not saying that we shouldn't be paying for choir, or reading Olympics, or electric car club. That's not what he's saying. I think what he's saying is, some of the opportunities, not all districts give, not to students, but to teachers, like maybe an administrator's doing more curriculum writing, or bus duty's part of it. Like, I have to do bus duty every day of my life, and nobody pays me for it.
No, and that's exactly right.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
As I look through this, my concern was mainly bus duty. And that's what I saw in there, and I don't view that as an activity.
Well, and that's just at the elementary level, so I'm wondering if that might be part of, okay.
Another teacher's not available to do it, because they're busy with kids. Like, there are things that, like you said, we've never seen before, so that's why we're asking questions.
And so what happens here, and just, you know, not to prolong this conversation, but I'm going to, what's important for everyone to understand that, you know, we're sitting here today dealing with matters that were decided for some reason in the past. Why it makes sense, I, you know, we couldn't ever get back and really unravel that. However, it's important that, as we discuss and move forward, that if there's things that we need to see changed, you know, in the contract conversation, that's when we bring the things up, and we see how that, you know, works as a result. So thank you.
Yeah, I know, Dave, you want to shut this down? I'm just going to say one last thing, too. I think the key point, and I want to make sure that it's clear to how it's viewed in the audience and viewed, you know, on video, is we need to make sure that it's supporting the value of the education, we're getting the value for our money. That is the point. It's not related to, we need to cut this, or we don't think that a mentor is doing the right thing. It has nothing to do that. We just need to have more clarity about what we, what we're getting, and we're getting the value for it. And if we're not, then we're going to have a serious conversation with the union. I would also advocate, in the case of this one, number nine, around supplemental contracts and activity sponsors. Bus duty exempt from that, but in some ways, we should be considering how we're going to be able to fund this more. We have a strategic objective to increase the number, the amount of participation, but we have a limited number of points in the process, and we pay per point, and we have, we're using those points. So for us to increase activities and opportunities at the high school in all grade levels, we're going to have to evaluate if this is the right contractual amount anyway.
I just want to offer, to Mr. Earnshaw's question, my understanding of the theater ticket, when you go to a production, that it's to, for the rights of the production of copyrighted material largely, is what that's used for.
I just add, since we're blaming Jay for things, I do want to say, I know this is, we've seen a lot of these supplemental contracts come through, and I think that's what spurred a lot of this discussion, is there are things that we just haven't seen that level of detail before. So I want to thank you for bringing these things forward, because I think this is important for us to see and get our arms around as we go through budgeting and contracts. But more importantly, as Paul said, and I was waiting for the keywords, he never said them, because he always does, the whole child, right? This is part of our commitment to the whole child, and these programs and clubs are what make Mathactin Mathactin, right? This is kind of what makes our district go around. So, yeah, I appreciate your comment, Paul, about saying, you know, we need to look at how we fund these things more, and how we get the best value for our dollar, that we're putting the points in the right places, and we're incentivized in the right kind of behavior. These are a positive, you know, let's focus on that as we go forward.
And with that, I think we're ready for our vote. All right, all those in favor? And the motion carries nine zero. And our last supplemental contract, can I have a motion to approve the fall season event supervisor? Mr. Winters, and a second, Ms. Cancro, comments from the board?
This was added since last week, correct? And I know you mentioned that when you went over it. So we had talked about us approving this person, and that we're doing it fall, winter, all goes well, we'll see about the third. So I know, I don't want to stick this person out, but already started the job, Mathactin employee, I don't know.
His resume and everything was in the Friday memo.
Okay. In the shared drive thing? Okay. Yeah, sorry, I just, I have like 20 of those, thank you, thank you.
Blame the guy to your left on that one.
I know, and I just, I have so many.
Any other comments from the board? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay, the motion carries eight to one. All right. Can I have a motion to approve items L, M, and N? They already have, see, I thank you guys for keeping me on point, it's been that long of a night already. Curriculum and programs, Dr. Ketonah.
Thank you. We are seeking the approval for the establishment and operation of an MCIU precounts program to be located in Arcola Intermediate School as outlined in the attached memorandum of understanding from September 24th, 2019 through June 30th, 2020.
And before the board does end that, I want to make sure that, you know, the due credit is given to Dr. Angstad for the leadership on this.
I think a round of applause.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the establishment and operation? Oh, I'm sorry, you're not going to let me finish reading it? A motion to approve establishment and operation of an MCIU pre-K counts program. Ms. Reese, and a second, Mr. Ryan, any comments from the board?
Yeah, just one question. In the, under the term of this, it references a date, it says at least 30 days prior to June 20th, 2019, in reference to like regals and stuff. Is that, do we know, is that date correct? Or we just, is it locked in? Any thoughts on that? So in the term, part of it, it's paragraph, it's paragraph four of the first page, it references, if the other, you must give written notice to their party at least 30 days prior to June 20th, 2019, if such notice is provided, and you shall automatically terminate at the end of the term unless parties mutually agree to new terms. I'm sure, I'm sure this was a boilerplate agreement that they did with other folks. Is this, is that date right? That's all, I'm just making sure, because it's in the past.
No.
Should be 2020.
It should be 2020.
That's okay, that was my question, okay.
I don't believe an amendment is necessary, as you're approving the establishment and operation of a program. It's not necessarily a particular contractual provision that you're approving.
And you get the same comment on the second page, just hold that.
Any other comments from the board? Ms. Hall?
I had one. There was a question regarding, from the public, regarding outside play for these children. I'm assuming that the administration has handled, and there are some accommodations being made for outside play.
So to answer that question, the MCIU has looked at the area outside of the back entrance where they would be coming in, and they felt that that was adequate for providing some type of games or play for the students. They will also have a large enough classroom that they can be able to do indoor games as well.
Thank you. Mr. Winters?
Yeah, Dr. Angstad, real quick, on the memo of understanding, it says number slots 18, I thought it was 20?
It is. Right now, they're thinking, you know, they may have 18 to start, so, but it is a total of 20.
And any other comments? All right, all those in favor? Motion carries nine zero. And I would just ask that we make sure that we make those adjustments to the dates before we put any ink on the agreement. Moving on to policy, we have nine policies up for first read, and I did want to address a couple of questions that came up this evening. One of the questions was about the student board representatives, and actually, there is a policy that governs the appointment of the board representatives, and it's 004.1. It basically is an administrative guideline that is given on how we appoint our board representatives, but it is explained a little bit more detail in that policy. And the policy on the superintendent contract is being updated pursuant to, I believe it's Act 55, is that correct, Mr. Sommers?
I believe that's correct. It is a change in, it's Section 1073 of the school code, changed the date for notice of, to a superintendent or assistant superintendent from 150 days to 90 days. So that's just adjusting district policy to mirror what's in state law.
Thank you for clarifying that for us. Mr. Winters?
Do we have to make some type of acknowledgement about the voting item related to the student representatives? Kyle?
Sure. So I believe that that particular item is really ceremonial in nature, not an act of agency business that creates any liability on the part of the district. And certainly, I don't believe that the student board representatives are not validly holding their office at the moment as a result of that action.
And we're not paying them, right? We're not paying them, so, yeah, so then, yes, inexperience. Now, that's it, Chris is out, he's done. All right, so going back to policy, may I have a motion to, actually, no, there is no motion. We are just, if there's any comments on these first read policies this evening. Seeing none, good, because we need to keep moving. Let's move on to other.
There are list of, there's one gift, accepted gift of one juniper trombone from Brad Smith for students in need for Skyview Elementary School, value $175, trips, approved the participation in Arcola Elementary School in the Main Exchange Program, cost of the district $1,044.90 for two substitutes for three days.
All right, can I have a motion to approve the gift and trip as presented here this evening? Ms. Drummond, and a second, Mr. Earnshaw, any comments from the board? Mr. Neverett?
Yeah, more of a question. For the main exchange trip, are these teachers, since we're talking about supplemental contracts, are these teachers paid anything additional for these trips? Because they spend five days out of state with these kids in their custody, and then there's another five days that they spend when they make kids come here. I know Mrs. Bronka, this is how, like, I've been doing this for, I know certainly Mrs. Bronka's been doing it for, I think, 15 years or more. Are they paid anything additional, or is the cost of the district just, so they're doing this out of the goodness of their heart? Okay. How's it shaking?
Any other comments from the board? Okay, all those in favor? Motion carries nine zero. Looking ahead, we have dates for October meetings, nothing out of the ordinary there. Is there any old business here this evening? Mr. Ryan?
I do have one item here, and it's probably one of the oldest matters of business that this board has seen. And I know that we generally do not talk about ongoing litigation matters, but my intent here is to not say anything more than what is public knowledge. We've been, with a ongoing tax assessment issue with the Shenandoah Properties commenced back in 2006. You know, we're coming up on our 13th anniversary, if we want to call it an anniversary, in the next couple of months here. And our current legal firm has been involved for the last six years. Board members sitting up here have been involved for the last four years, some for only two years, some for maybe less. But the point here is that it seems that we are stuck in an endless cycle of litigation, and something needs to break that cycle. So without speaking to the facts of the case, or any opinion one way or the other, I think this board needs to start having some discussions, and I believe, and the solicitor can correct me if I'm wrong here, that we are able to talk about the process of what's going on, our representation, what's going on in the court system, what may be holding this up and what's not. Because I can tell you that, you know, people talk about what they hear in the public and everything, and I'll tell you what, there's not a more up and coming issue that people contact me about frequently, it is this matter. Because people are starting to learn that, how much money that we are sitting on in escrow of $5 million plus at this point, which is public information on our Treasury report. People are starting to learn that, and that's funny, that this district is sitting on that we can't touch. So I don't know if it means that we have to go out for an RFP for this one legal engagement to see if there's another firm out there that has a different plan of attack. I don't know if there's some type of help or relief that we can get from the state or from the county to say, hey, we don't care which way you lean on this, we just want this case to be heard, to move forward as a district, because the future of this district really does depend on this. So I don't know, and again, Kyle, correct me, what we can and cannot say along these lines here, but I think we got to do something, because the perception is that we're doing nothing. And I can tell the public that that is not the case. But we got to do something more to break this cycle.
Yeah, I, I'm right there with you, Mr. Ryan, and I can tell you, in the last four years, I can't count the number of times that I feel that we've gotten updates that start to feel repetitive, and it reminds me a little bit of the movie Groundhog Day, where we're living the same thing over and over again. And it's hard to know exactly what's going on, and I believe, maybe it's time for us to schedule another executive session so that we can talk about this a little bit more freely, given that it's a matter of pending litigation. But I do agree that it is a matter that needs to be addressed, it's quite a sizable elephant in the room.
And just along those lines, too, that if it is another executive session, and I do understand the classified information aspect of that, I almost wonder do understand the, the classified information aspect of that, I almost wonder if, and again, I think I can say this here, that do we have both the firm that's handling the case and our solicitor for the school district there? Because I think it's important to get some type of outside information who hasn't been necessarily 100% involved in this, to both be there for this executive session, to see if there is something that, you know, is being missed, quite frankly. I mean, I don't know of another school district, and maybe this is information for someone to go look up, but is any other school district in Montgomery County involved in a case that's taking this long? So, again, I'm just trying to look for some way to break this. I think if we have another executive session with just the same group, that we may wind up stuck in the same cycle. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Any other old business? Mr. Earnshaw?
A couple things. Most of which relate to the last week's work session, which I was unable to attend. One is, Dr. Zerby, could you give me any update on the parking situation? There were a fair number of comments from the public on the parking situation for the bus drivers.
So, the, the comments resulted in a determination earlier this week to return those drivers back to parking on campus.
All right. Thank you. The second was, there were some comments about, some postings on the website that the comments that were received were just from the public relating to Arrowhead and part of that process. And it, my view is, if those comments are still on the website, given that, I think there was a comment that information in there is inaccurate, there were some derogatory comments, I think they should just be removed at this point. I believe there were two rounds of comments from the public, the first of which related to, you know, the determination whether to keep Arrowhead as an operating school in the district. That's resolved at this point. And I think the second round of comments were related to renovation, build new, that kind of information, which I think is kind of, by gauging KCBA, that's been resolved. So, I would suggest removing the comments and maybe putting on in their place that those two rounds of public comments are available upon request, something like that. Just my suggestion on, on how to handle that matter. And then the third matter I had, and I'll thank Mr. Ryan for raising the issue I would have raised relating to the Arrowhead debt financing and the impact on the debt service over the years. And in response to that, I went back to not only look at the presentation that PFM had given, but I went back and looked at the last five years of the audit reports. And there's a disclosure in there, the long-term debt section, which provides the amount of debt service that is required annually going forward after the most recent fiscal year. And when I look at those five reports, the district's debt service requirements have ranged anywhere from a low of $9.3 million annually to a maximum of $10 million. But the last year, last few years have been like $9.5 to $9.8 million. And when I look at the information PFM presented, debt service requirements go all the way up to $11.7 million, which is about $1.7 million above the highest in any one given year for the past five years. In addition to that, as Mr. Ryan pointed out, some of the debt service requirements really do escalate fairly quickly to the tune of going up almost $700,000 in any given year. So, as the Arrowhead project is considered, I think it's important to, that some budget projections get done to figure out how the district can handle these debt service requirements and what needs to give, whether that's stamping cuts, program cuts. Just how do you get there in managing the budget, knowing that we've got limitation on tax increases under the Act 1 index? Thank you.
Anyone else with old business? Mr. Navaret?
Yeah, just one comment. So, this morning, Dr. Zerby and Mr. Bretz and I were at Eagleville. We had a great meeting with Dr. Harmer and five members of his staff, just to inform them as to what the path forward is for Eagleville. And it was, it was a very positive discussion, very open about the findings that we had. Mark did a great job of kind of presenting it there in a relatively simple way. And the feedback that we got was good. The best comment that I heard was, this was great communication. Thank you for coming. We'll pass this along. So, thank you for doing that, Dr. Zerby. I think that's great. I think that kind of sets the bar for what we want to do with some of these bigger projects going forward. You know, look at the high school next year, some other projects, so thank you for that.
Anyone else with old business? New business? Okay. We've got PSBA officer elections. And I believe for all four of these, yeah, these are people who are running unopposed. So, assuming that there is no objection, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the four PSBA officer positions as presented. Ms. Reese, is there a second? Mr. Navaret? Any comments from the board? Seeing none? All those in favor? This motion carries 9-0. And then finally, we have three board members who are going to attend the PSBA leadership conference being held next month in Hershey, Pennsylvania. Can I have a motion to approve these three board members attending the leadership conference? Ms. Reese, is there a second? Mr. Winters, any comments from the board?
There was a comment last week that maybe from the public that Mr., that maybe Mr. Ryan shouldn't go because he will no longer be on the board after December, and I just wanted to say that his presence there, Ms. Hall's presence there, and Ms. Drummond's presence, presence there is very appreciated, and they bring back information to us. And Mike is fantastic at informing us and sharing with us what he learns, because all nine of us can't go. I wish I could go, and I cannot go. So, I appreciate him going, and he is very good about sharing that information. And his time here at the table and elsewhere has been invaluable over the last four years, and he will be greatly missed, and I appreciate him going in October, and I look forward to what you have to share.
I would echo that sentiment. Unfortunately, every year, this conference coincides with the conference that I'm required to attend for work, so I have yet to be able to attend. But I know that these three attended last year and brought back a slew of information. And even when Mr. Ryan's not on the board anymore, I know where he lives, and I know his phone number, so we'll still get this information if we need it. Any other comments from the board before we take our vote? All those in favor? The motion carries 9-0. And with that, that takes us to courtesy of the floor, an opportunity for residents to provide comments on matters that could come before the board of directors. Anyone for courtesy of the floor? Dr. Malik?
I agree with Mr. Ryan's comments on the community center, 100%. I don't think any more needs to be said about that. Who formed the Navaret-Larceny's Community Center Committee? How was that, how was that formed? I remember being here at this meeting. So, did the chair or the president then appoint the committee yourself? Is that how it worked? I don't even know why I'm asking questions, because you didn't answer any of the questions I asked before, but, you know, I could give you my answer, but I think it's a problem that the chief negotiators, the president and Mr. Navaret, didn't seem to inform the board of what's going on. Seems to me that the board's in the dark by listening to Mr. Ryan's comments. He's not really sure what's going on, what the status is. Do you guys come back to the board and tell them what's going on? Or is this like a little private gathering thing, where you guys hide the info? How's it work? I can't, you know, I'm trying to figure out how that whole thing works. I want to thank Mr. Navaret for throwing the Warsester residents a bone by allowing us to participate in LP's, what is it, Camp Perquium in Lower Providence Township. That's really nice of you. Appreciate that. But, problem is, the proposed community center is located in Lower Providence, not Warsester. It was built with Warsester tax money, and, you know, how much was spent to build Audubon and to renovate, do all the renovations? How much of our tax money is in there? I don't think it's fair for you guys, you two, to be doing a deal to put something in LP that I got to drive 25 minutes to. Doesn't benefit me at all, and doesn't enhance my property values, because I'm nowhere near it. So, you know, it's nice that you want to think of Warsester residents, but I really don't think you're thinking of Warsester residents. You know, maybe you should start. The prior meeting, Mr. Bickelman and Mr. Andrews brought up their concerns about these derogatory comments. And again, the president said there's a lot of inaccuracies and exaggerations. There is a lot of irrelevant and derogatory comments made. Well, and you didn't want to censor the people who made these derogatory comments. I'm just wondering whether you're familiar with Board Policy 903, where you have the ability to, you know, censure our speech at the microphone if it's derogatory, obscene, irrelevant, too lengthy, but you'll do it here at the microphone, right? You threatened to kick me out once. But you won't do it to people who are making derogatory comments about members of the public? So, if I sit here right now and say you guys are stooges, that, I can get away with that? Or you would kick me out of here? You see where I'm going with it? You understand, you understand what I'm saying? So, I guess you feel it's okay for people to make derogatory comments about members of the public, but the board's got a whole different, other classification. You're above all that. So, I'd suggest you rethink what you're doing.
Thank you, Dr. Malik. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Mr. Bickelman?
I want to speak to the superintendent's report on the gifted program. The way it sounded, there was going to be a study of the gifted program. We're going to have teachers involved. We're going to have outside consultants involved, people that give their expertise on it. We're going to have, you know, parents, community members involved. But being one of three people that come to every board meeting, you have to go back a step. It was Dr. Zerby's idea to put on the agenda to remove one gifted teacher and replicate the delivery system of the gifted program at Skyview to the Arcola program. You know, it was going to be a gifted teacher cut. That's going back to the beginning. Everything that he said tonight sounds like, you know, this is just a new plan, a progressive way of looking at this. Well, the impetus of this committee and this gifted review came from two very astute parents in the audience that spoke at this podium. Okay? That's what drove out this committee review of the gifted program. Okay? It wasn't anybody's great idea to do it now. It came from the parents that came up here, because none of this was done before the decision to change the delivery system of the gifted program at Skyview. That's what you get from being one of three community members to come to every meeting. You see a continuum, and you can see how things are connected. Okay? That's why the review of the gifted program is being done now. Mr. Navaret abstained from a vote. His wife was getting $90, I think, for curriculum writing. He abstained one other time for $300, but you can clarify it when I'm done. You voted for the contract for the teachers, of which your wife is a member of the union, where her salary could be 70, 80, $90,000. So, you need to explain that one to me. Remember the clubs? We had a lot of clubs that had cash balances in them at the high school. One had $11,000 balance or something like that, supposed to be distributed to charities in the community. It sat there for years, along with other cash balances. Mr. Bricker got that all straightened out, which is great, and the clubs are a good thing. Reading Olympics, that position is vacant, I saw on the list. I don't know why a Reading Olympics club position would be vacant in a school district. Shenondale, we have $5.6 million sitting in there under escrow from Shenondale. That $600,000 every year is on the back of the taxpayers to fund the current operational budget. So, when this gets resolved, if $5.6 million comes back to the district, there needs to be checks cut to the public for that money. This shouldn't be rolled in any capital projects, because we're, we're shouldering that $600,000. There was $4,800 paid for the Shenondale assessment for the month of July to the firm of Dishel and Bartle. Again, again, 13 years we've been doing this. It's ridiculous. And I was wondering how the salary table review is going, because I know some teachers that, you know, were getting 0.8% raises, 1% raises, you know, anywhere from one year to seven years of work here in the district. So, I wonder how that is getting worked on. There's supposed to be a committee that came from the arbitrator in the contracts. So, hopefully, we get that straightened out so we don't lose good teachers, you know, one to seven-year teachers, like we have been. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bickelman. Mr. Andrews?
We've got a pretty good meeting going this evening, a lot of excellent discussion. Again, I bring up the matter of the stooges. That comment is against the explicit text on the front of today's yellow agenda handouts in that it's abusive, and your policy says there should not be abusive comments. And to, to try to cover up for continued availability of that information, saying that it's, well, it's just another inaccuracy, that doesn't hold any water. With regard to the KCBA contract, in August, there was a vote on that subject, but no contract. So, I'm wondering, is the contract with KCBA signed by both parties yet? There could be some disputes about work that's done before a contract is signed. The, the presentation by Mr. Wellert of PFM last week was made available through Right to Know, and it shows that it looks like there's going to be a total borrowing obligation for the district, principal and interest of $222 million. And I wonder how that compares with the borrowing limit for the district. I suspect the borrowing limit for the district is under $300 million. Where enrollment has been declining for, for well over a decade, I, I just think that we should be avoiding going near the borrowing limit. And relative to that, the board's current position is to go ahead with, with a new Arrowhead school. And I think one, one thing that is against that is that I see no obvious reason why that has to be rushed. If that were done, let's say, five or six years later, the district would be better off in terms of its debts, and we'd be better off relative to... off in terms of its debts and we'd be better off relative to enrollment actuals, enrollment And, you know, we may be going into a recession next year. There's a lot of talk in the financial media of that. European countries are not growing. The growth trends in China that the government, the communist government there presents don't appear to hold water. So, you know, we may be on hard times a come a year or two from now. And also, in the Enquirer today, September 24th--
Sorry, Mr. Andrews, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up.
I just, one more, one short sentence. There was a presentation in the Enquirer by Senator Hughes of Philadelphia about the fair funding formula and how that is unfair to Philadelphia. And, you know, if that gets fixed, Methacton is going to have less subsidy and Methacton is not going to be better off for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Anyone else with public, yes, I'm sorry, courtesy of the floor? Okay. Any final comments from the board before we adjourn? Can I have a motion to adjourn? Ms. Drummond and a second, Mr. Earnshaw? Thank you, everyone. Good night.